Okay, next order of persons on the agenda is public comment. So we'd like to give the public a chance to speak for five minutes at this time. Please try to be, you know, we have a lot of people, possibly a lot of comments, so try to be not terribly repetitive. And also too, I think the board is sticking to the standard policy of, you know, we will certainly listen very attentively to your comments, but we're not going to answer any questions at this time. If anyone would like to speak, this is your opportunity.
Can I ask a clarification? Clarification? On the agenda, it says that it's for matters not listed on the agenda. So is it public comment about anything, or?
I just noticed that, as far as I know, the law requires, the law allows you to comment on basically anything related to the board.
Okay.
So I'd, no, I don't think you have to hold yourselves to anything not on the agenda.
Can I ask you a quick question? So this agenda doesn't actually say exactly what this is about, a special meeting? I mean, is there, like, other than your district facility procedures, et cetera?
We have our regular monthly board meetings, those are regular meetings. Any other meeting is just by definition a special meeting.
So is this defined for something? Are we here for something specific that you can elaborate on?
Just what's on the agenda.
And that's a closed session?
Well, there's the main agenda items, the use of the district facilities, policies and procedures, and then the board is asked to go into executive session to discuss performance of specific individuals. That's something that is done in closed session.
So we're worried about that when there's others, major, more issues for this board trustees to be worried about?
If that is the agenda for this meeting, certainly we can say we have our regular monthly meetings and-
But you haven't called any other special meetings for any other topics that are, I think, a little much more worthy of-
I mean, if you want to address that as a comment, but that's not something I can really-
But you're not gonna-
Sorry.
...answer questions. What does this board do? I mean, if you're not here to answer questions for the public, I mean, we're here to be notified of what's going on.
David Brown, Sanctuary. You three gentlemen are appointed by the Lake County Board, and as such, you're their direct agents. And so all of your actions, we will hold accountable to the Lake County Board members and make them well aware and responsible and accountable in whatever you guys are doing.
I just have one quickie for. Why would you say that there's public comment and then you say we're not going to answer any of your questions? What, that doesn't make any sense.
The law requires that we have public comment, but under the advice of our attorney-
We are gonna answer you, so-
That is not, we have a, we adopted a policy for public comment that says that we will not answer questions unless the board specifically calls for a motion to not, to suspend that rule. And I don't believe that. I've heard a motion for that, so.
Excuse me, does this meeting have anything to do with a three-year-old's birthday party? Is that why we're here?
I can't answer that question. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I may have come in a little bit late, but who's the fourth gentleman today?
This is our attorney. He and Brian are both members of the same firm, and Brian was not able to be here tonight. So John Kelly is also one of the partners in the firm.
Thank you.
Other comments? Yes?
In 2002, when the referendum to build this building was being solicited to the community, several flyers were mailed that expressly stated that this would be an open building for the community to use and be on as requested basis, and there are no other buildings in the community at that time that were open for public use. So I instruct you guys to look at what you mailed to the community, what they voted for, what they paid for, what they're still paying for, and that you don't break any promises that were made. As you'll be, as you're gonna reflect and be accountable to the Lake County Board, and you're acting in their behalf. And they're accountable for your actions, your decisions, and your communications, and how ridiculous you can look.
Yes?
So my name is Matt Nielsen, and I am the father of the three-year-old that had the birthday party here. It was a great morning for them, and we certainly didn't feel that we acted in any way inappropriately, or that the fire department and the personnel acted in any way inappropriately. The fire department on their website even has a huge section about Norwood Fire Department in the community. And it talks about how, without the community and without the fire department, how synergistic they are together, and how they have to work together and they build a culture together. So first comment I'll make is, the culture that you're presenting right now is not a very open culture for the community. So you're going against what you even market on your website, and I find that to be very inappropriate. But it talks strongly about how important the community is and how important the involvement of the fire department and the firefighters are in the community. And it talks about the use of the firehouse for public events, and it talks about the public events that they hold in the firehouse. So it is very odd, the timing of this meeting, and that's the agenda topic, is about the use of facilities, and that it has happened now approximately two weeks after this party. And from what conversations we've had with people in the community, it all seems to be revolving around the birthday party that we had. Obviously, A, that makes me feel very badly that we did something to generate such a hoopla. It's supposed to be a three-year-old birthday party. It's supposed to be an opportunity for kids to come into the firehouse and meet the firefighters and learn about fire safety, and learn about that they can trust the firefighters, that they can trust the firehouse as a safe place for them. And if there's gonna be a restriction of that, I would just find that highly inappropriate, other than the fact that obviously people have talked about that this is supposed to be a community center. And this is, from what I understand, this is essentially the only public building that Norwood has, and it's a community center. And I lived in Norwood for ten years. I live in Lake Bluff now, but I lived in Norwood for ten years. My wife was a dispatcher at Lake Forest Police Department, so she dispatched for the fire department, she dispatched for fire, for police. So she has a lot of relationships within this fire department as well. And it's supposed to be a community center. So the fact that there's a special meeting called to address an issue, whether there's an issue or not, seems to be in question, but you guys won't say what the issue is. And I think that's why people are upset. It just, it just kind of is very concerning. The website talks about having, obviously, policies and procedures. So it'll be interesting to know at some point, I understand apparently you're not gonna acknowledge tonight, but at some point, and maybe it has to be a FOIA request, to get copies of those policies and procedures as to whether there is existing policies about the use of the facility. I was told that there is an existing policy about use of the facility, after the fact, by somebody not directly in the fire department, but by a trustee, actually. So I'd be curious to see about that and understand whether there truly is, because if there is a policy, I'm not really understanding why there's even a meeting to talk about the use of the facility. That's an existing issue. The, again, of this is a community center, and it teaches people, and there have been multiple groups that have come through this firehouse, boy scouts, girl scouts, other children's events, all kinds of adult events, whatever it may be. But it's about teaching people about fire education and fire safety, and that they can interact with the firemen, and that they can trust the firemen, just as police departments do the same. The firemen should be doing the same as well, and they do that. All of our communities in the area do that, and that's an important role for them to do. So any action trying to limit that access is gonna be a real issue for the communities, and will be detrimental to the relationship of the fire department within the community.
For the record, I'm proud to be aware that there's only ten days remaining in Dan Reuter's appointment. At that time, tougher renewal, the board will appoint a new person, this could be his last ten days, everybody should know that. Hopefully, he's not here in May.
Yes?
Under fire department guidelines, from a national standpoint as well as from a local state level, public education is a directive not only from the National Fire Academy, but also from National Fire Protection Association. It is truly the purview of fire chief to be that person who reaches out to the public to be that access point. The precedent you're setting here by potentially, possibly, allegedly making decisions based on public education, use of a facility, is setting a precedent statewide that may have very negative effects across the board, throughout the county, but also statewide everywhere. I also am not exactly sure that this meets the Open Meetings Act for what steps have to be taken in order for this to take place in a reasonable timeframe for everybody to be able to have it. Some sort of input. Right now, it's taxation without representation, and I think pretty much that's how things went poorly the first time. Thank you, good luck today.
Other comments?
Even longer I live in Norwood, I've been here for over twenty-five years. I had absolutely no idea why I came to this meeting tonight, I just heard that there was gonna be a special meeting. I looked at an agenda, I don't, still don't know why we're here. I heard a gentleman say something about a birthday party. If that is why we are here, number one, I fully support the birthday party, I fully support the people that had the party here, the fact that it was at a fire station, the fact that they learned about fire safety. And if that is why we're here, and if you folks called the meeting to discuss something about that in a negative way, shame on you. Shame on you. It's ridiculous. Again, I support it.
Other comments?
Having been a firefighter for, give or take, eight or nine years on Lake Bluff and another place, we fell all over ourselves trying to get the public to come in. We had, anytime anybody came, we're just, "Come on in." That's the way it should be. You know, we were volunteers, we were up there doing, Norwood is here doing volunteer work, and anything that we can do to, as firefighters, as fire people, as fire women, whatever it happens to be, to help this community is, you can't put a price tag on it. You can't put a price tag on someone's life that you save because you teach a kid how to call 911, or how to stop drop and roll. You can't put a price tag on saving that life, or on having that child know what to do if something does happen. And this is the place where they will learn. And if you prevent them from learning, you're going to have sooner or later, maybe not today, maybe not tomorrow, not next week, maybe not in the next ten days, but somebody will have missed that opportunity to learn. And that will cost a life. And for you guys to put any sort of a negative connotation on coming to a fire station, to the schools, to the parents, to anyone, is, that's awful. I can't tell you how awful that is. You know, for a child to learn what to do in a situation like that, in any situation where this is arising, is, there's no, it's invaluable. You can't put a price tag on it. I may be repeating myself, but you guys need to hear it. Bob, you know it. Okay? You can't stop that stuff from happening. The other thing that this, that Norwood does is it teaches young people a trade, a profession. It gives them an opportunity to learn to be firemen, to learn to be paramedics, EMTs, and that is something I don't think has been mentioned yet, but it's an open opportunity for people to get a profession that is important and allow them to give back to the community. And instead of out, you know, drinking a twelve-pack, they're here busting their butts helping people. And you guys need to look at what this, the value of this place to the community, not what the liability may have been for having seven kids in here that were under three, you know, three or four years old. That's, you know, I don't know how many firemen were here, I bet there were probably a dozen. But there wasn't any issue of liability. Yeah, maybe climbing on the trucks wasn't so smart. But as long as there's somebody with them, they learn. And that learning, you can't put a price tag on. So please, don't put one on it. Don't make it a negative connotation for anybody.
Other comments?
I should just want to add in something. In case there's misunderstanding regarding the party itself, and again, a lot of questioning regarding whether there's a policy that permission has to be asked of the board in advance, I was told that that is the policy. You're shaking your head, "No." Okay, so there is no policy, but, but there was, it was said by a trustee that there's an existing policy. So clearly miscommunication that needs to be handled, and, you know, that's, typically these kinds of situations happen because there's miscommunications, and things get blown out of proportion. And I totally feel like clearly that's what's happening here. But just to be clear, when we had our event here, there were on-staff firefighters that were on staff and on duty. There were, the bulk of the group that was here were volunteers, were people that volunteered to come in for the party. So I just don't want people to feel like there was a misuse of funds in some way. Firefighters volunteered to come in and work with these children, and that, sorry, that's just, I mean, it's an amazing experience for them. And that, you know, to think that that might not happen is definitely concerning to me. And in addition to that, in terms of fun kind of thing, we gave what we feel to be, and what we were told to be, a significant donation to the fire department also, because we knew that there was, regardless of, you know, that they didn't really outweigh anything. We knew that it was a use of the room, we knew that, you know, it certainly was a mental use of their time, and we did donate to the fire department on behalf of our family for that, for that as well. So I don't want people to think that there was any kind of misuse of funds as well, because that was not the case at all.
Other comments?
My name is Greg Marsh, I have a little small prepared statement here. I'm a lifelong resident of the area. I went to grade school here in Norwood at West Elementary. My dad was a volunteer at Norwood before I was born. I currently am an assistant chief in Lake Bluff. I've been volunteering in Lake Bluff for thirty years. I'm here to express my support for Chief Harlow, which is the crux of the matter here. Being a chief is to say the least challenging. A chief has to manage his personnel, has to manage all administrative duties, a chief has to manage his department's relationship with the community, and a chief has to manage his department's relationship with neighboring departments. John has nurtured an atmosphere of cooperation and mutual understanding, the needs of his and his neighbor's departments, and how we can share responsibilities and achieve the ultimate goal of what my chief calls assured response. John also takes very seriously a chief's responsibility of continued community awareness programs to promote fire safety in the community. One of the commonly used targets of this community awareness program is educating children about fire safety. This is often accomplished while hosting a group of children during a special event, such as a school outing to a firehouse, or a scout's outing to a firehouse, and yes, sometimes a birthday party. Typically, at one of these events, a couple of firemen would put on all their gear in front of the children to speak to them about fire safety while wearing their air mask. This is done to alleviate some, some of the fear. When a child is in need of rescue, they will know what a rescuer looks like and sounds like. Then there's always the stop, drop, and roll training. It's invaluable. Fire departments have always been considered part of the community center. As an example, I have compiled a list of the various activities that the Lake Bluff Fire Department has participated in that don't actually involve firefighting or EMS services. This is standard practice. In the twelve months in 2016, the Lake Bluff Fire Department was involved in twenty-one various activities, eight birthday parties, seven hosted events in and around the firehouse, three school visits, and three block parties. Let me wrap this up by stating that it would be awfully short-sighted to relieve or reprimand an outstanding member of this community and an accountless member of the fire service for doing what is expected and appreciated by both.
Other comments?
I would just like to reiterate that yesterday, my husband had a conversation with Dan, and it was stated that the birthday party's not the issue. The issue is that there is an existing policy in place that states that the board must authorize all public events, and this did not take place. So what is at hand, according to Dan, is the fact that the policy was not followed. According to this agenda, that is not clear, and it's about discussing the use of the facility. Well, if there's a policy that exists, then there's no discussion about use necessary, and this is mute. If Dan was not truthful yesterday, then there is an issue that the board is not being truthful, and the board cannot be trusted. So everything is not lining up, and you just need to be aware of the kind of circumstance and, you know, obviously the facts.
Is the policy, is the chief is supposed to ask permission to, to hold something in this, in this building? Is that the policy?
It's Thomas Record, isn't it, Mark? So you can't answer that?
Well, again, it's just, I'm operating under the policy that the board is not going to answer questions.
So then, can we see it? Where's the policy? It's open to the public, right? Can we see it?
Subject to an appropriate Freedom of Information Act request, the department can't make the policy available.
Why do you guys hide behind procedure?
Because procedure is there to protect everybody, both you and the district board. And if the board is to engage in giving out policies, then they are going to establish a precedent of doing it all the time. The Freedom of Information Act is there for just this purpose, district is happy to comply with the Freedom of Information.
Another question. What would be an instance where the policy would work against you? Why would it not be public record?
I'm not saying it's the policy necessarily, but there could be requests for other kinds of information, for example, your personnel file, that the district doesn't want to give out, so the Freedom of Information Act protects both you, members of the department, and the department, and the public in terms of the access to the record.
I understand confidential information, but we're talking about public policies. Just, I'm just asking a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How are we, as a public, able to follow these policies if they're not available to us? Say, if I wanted to have a meeting here, how am I gonna know that I have to get permission from the board? I mean, this is a catch-22 that's impossible for anybody to follow. This is the most, I mean, this is ridiculous. Clearly, everyone here, the family that had the party, would have been delighted to follow policy, unfortunately, there's no way to know it's there. It's very disappointing. Very disappointing. In fact, it's pretty ridiculous.
Ten days, Dan, ten days.
Hi, Karen Neath. Are the trustees not supposed to be working with the taxpayers, the citizens, and the fire department? Are you not appointed through our politicians that we elect? And if so, I, I would imagine that we should all be working together, is that not correct? Or you just do your own thing and the politicians take lead for that? Or do we just sit back and say, "Well, okay, they may do their decision, and that's that"? I mean, somebody obviously appointed everybody here, you all, and it wasn't us. So I'm assuming it was the politicians that represent us as the taxpaying citizens.
I'm not gonna answer. Other comments?
You shouldn't, you're not answering.
Hearing none, then we'll move on to item three, listing district facilities, including policies, uses, procedures, authorizations, notices, et cetera. I spoke with Brian earlier in the week, and asked him if he knew if there was a, an existing manual, and he was not sure if, because he's only been here a few years, if there was. So he said at the next meeting, he would put together a real, you know, simple boilerplate for the board to begin to work with Chief Harlow on having just a general set of policies and procedures of making the building available with proper insurance and staffing, and how we would go about doing that, so different functions can be held and proceed here. So that's all I have to say on it. I looked, I asked him if he could get it to us before the meeting, so each one of the three of us could look at it, mark it up, and make our own comments, John as well, to get it to John and Mike, both just to look through it and review it. That's it? No, I'm waiting for that, too. Okay. I think just, just for, you know, the good of everybody, as far as I know, as Brian said, since I've been here, I've not been aware of an existing all-encompassing set of policies regarding this. I've never seen, never laid my eyes on it. But that doesn't surprise me, I think that's pretty typical, and I know that in my, how do I say, my, my former life, I was very much involved in, you know, in information security and privacy with policies in a fairly significant corporation. We had some of the same issues. But what was typically the case was there was a lot of practices and procedures that had been followed by people, so it wasn't just making it up as we went along. And I think that's very much the case here, is that we have a lot of existing practices and procedures. I think we are well-served to go through the, through the important ones particularly, and turn them into formal policies for the future. I did a little looking, since I came on the board, and we've done about five or six, I think we've done an investment policy, we've done a purchasing policy, because spending money is one of those things you do really need to be, be more precise about, like, policy on emergency lights on cars, on the UCV dispatch, drug and substance abuse, but we sort of come along on that, so that's what we're going. The, in looking at, you know, talking to the chief about the existing policies, well, I should say, the existing practices, I think what, you know, based on history, and I think again, Deputy Chief Vissel has a good, you know, good input on that, having been around a long time. As you may notice on our website, we do, you know, say that the community areas, this room and the, and the room upstairs, are available for the community to use pretty much, whenever they're available, and as long as those uses don't interfere with public safety functions of this, of the district, and they're not one of the prohibited things like, you know, a political party or a for-profit endeavor, something along those lines. And we've been operating under those sort of general practices for a long time. So I think, you know, to address, you know, the, the particular issue of the birthday party, I think it falls under both. Having a birthday party in this room is a community event. I mean, I don't see any issue why somebody wants to do that. And again, the expense is borne by the, by the people, not by the district. But also too, we do a lot of community outreach, public safety, fire safety training, all those things. I think that's part of our mission. And so it's not at all uncommon to combine the two things. That was certainly the, you know, the drift that I was getting from talking to, to the chief. And I also, in talking to Brian, our attorney, and also I reached out to our insurance agent, again, his company is the company that handles a lot of fire departments all over the country. And so in his experience, that we had all the proper coverages in place to allow for this, that, again, very, very, very common practice to do events like this, so I think everything's consistent, so. So, certainly I think that, the impression that I'm getting at this point is that the direction of the board is just a simple protocol and practice going forward. I'm not really hearing anything that anybody's complaining about the practice in the past, so.
That's pretty much. I have one other, just quick item on that, that I want to direct it to Matt. I apologize if I indicated to you that there, that I knew of a policy, I didn't mean to say that. I did not know of the policy. That was a conversation private between you and me, Matt. If I, if I misspoke, I apologize to you, because I'm not aware of it. That's part of what this is, is to put it in place so that everything can be done.
Why are we here?
Good question. I think we're all wondering that at this point.
During our conversation, that's what I was trying to get across here, that it's just a matter of getting everything lined up properly, and I wasn't aware of anything that was, was currently in place. So that's all we're trying to do, is, is put it in place. I believe we tried to do it without getting this into the regular board meeting and taking up the time, so. So, anyhow, Matt, that's what I wanted to say to you and your wife both, so I apologize if, when you and I spoke that I wasn't clear on that. That's all I have.
Also, one thing, and I apologize if I should have brought this up at the beginning, I'd be very remiss not to do so, but I spoke to both of the county board reps that, that our district is in, and they both wanted to express their regrets for not being able to be here tonight, they both wish they could, that they both had personal reasons why they couldn't, they have to convey that, so.
Can you name who the reps are, please?
Yes, Mike Rommel is, the head of the, the Knollwood part, and Sandy Hart is the, the Lake Bluff sanctuary portion of the district. So again, my apologies for not bringing that up at the beginning, but.
So, may I just ask something? I'm curious, because if, if in fact you're here to figure out these policies and procedures and make sure that everything, as you said, was in order, and then, in number four, we're in a closed session to discuss the performance of specific individuals of the district? I mean, if everything seems to have been legit and everything, other than asking permission from this board, is, from what I'm understanding, to have this birthday party or another function at some point, I'm assuming? What, why is it a closed session to speak about a performance of a specific individual? And is that not open to the, I mean, should we not know about this either? I mean, what, why?
Well, under, under the Open Meetings Act, there are certain things that, you know, that the board is able to go into executive session to discuss, they cannot take any action if they wish to take any action. And typically.
So, we need to number four, you're coming back to talk to us about number five, whatever action?
Yes, if, if, if there is, if it's just a discussion, not really, but.
So you can clarify as well?
Yes, but I mean, typically what you're, typically that has to do with things like, like if there's pending contract negotiations or personnel issues.
Well, this is a performance of specific individuals of the district.
The, the Open Meetings Act makes a specific exception to have a closed session to discuss personnel, and the reason for that is just to protect the personnel involved. If the district, for instance, gets a complaint against one of the firefighters, that is not something that I'm sure the district, the chief, firefighter himself or herself would want discussed in front of the open public. So, the opportunity for the board to discuss it in closed session. Now, if that, those charges become factual or require discipline, the actual activity is gonna have to take place in an open session. But the discussion.
And then we will, we will be notified, or we will know about.
If, if there's something to happen, it would, the board would have to vote on it in an open session, or it can take no votes in a closed session.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to a closed session.
I don't think it's actually adjourned, John.
Isn't it to recess?
To recess this meeting.
And go to closed session.
Second.
Do you need all in favor?
Aye.
Has to be a roll call, low. Justice Brown?
Aye.
Justice Rogers?
Aye.
Justice Sutherland?
Aye.
So the board is going to close session under section 2C1 of the Open Meetings Act. The board will return to open session after the closed session.
Right. Okay, under item five, action arising from a closed session, there is no action arising from a closed session, so.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second. Is at 628, motion to adjourn meeting. At 628, Bob seconded. Voice vote, all aye. Aye. Thank you. Comments?
Really? Well, they already done. It's okay.